No, I don't. Pretty light agenda. Pardon me, nobody's been doing it in the last two weeks.
Let's get this started.
Hey, no efflers from the back. I can throw you out of here.
Give it a try, mister.
All right, good morning, everyone. We're here for the pre-board meeting of swearing in of the newly-elected officers and officials of the county, so I'm not sure where we go from here. Is...
Just turn it over to the judge.
Where's the judge? I was looking for him. He's looking very distinguished in the back. Why don't you take over, Mr. Harper?
Everybody stand by. What does that tell you about...
You must be joyous more at this job.
Well, for me, it was easier.
Well, that's true.
And for the judge, it was easier to pick.
Right, ready?
Yep.
Alright, conclusions, good afternoon. I, please state your name.
I, Mr. Fennelly.
You solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies foreign and domestic.
That I will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States
and the Constitution of the State of California.
That I take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion. And that I will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which I am about to enter. Congratulations. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Thank you, everyone, at the time.
Good morning. Happy 2019 to everyone. This is the January 2nd, 2019 meeting. Supervisors. Terry, I keep saying this, but why don't you lead us since this will be...
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, public comment. This time is for information from the public on matters not appearing on this agenda. All comments are limited to three minutes and must pertain to matters within the jurisdiction of this board. When addressing the board, please state your name for the record and address the board as a poll through the chair. No action or discussion will be conducted on matters not listed on the agenda. However, the chair may refer the subject matter to the appropriate department for a follow-up or schedule a matter on a subsequent board agenda. Any public comment today?
Chairman.
Good morning, Chairman.
Good morning.
Couple things. One of them is, I see item 1.1 on the agenda is to nominate an elect chairman if I determine. I was hoping that that might be foregoed until we have new board members. That would be my preference. I think it makes sense that we shouldn't elect the new chairperson with the old board. In other matters, I watched the videos in the last full meeting regarding the grading ordinance, and it seems like a little bit of a... there's quite a bit of confusion going on with what perhaps Planning Department should be focusing on. And I don't really think that it was a great idea to kind of ram the grading ordinance through on urgency matter, but so be it. It looks like it had a shot and it failed. And now there's kind of a sense that we don't really know what's the highest priority for planning. And the Planning Department and the Planning Commission have both asked for public support for a Class K housing ordinance. And I would think that with the failure of the grading ordinance, the highest priority should probably go to a Class K housing ordinance. And that's actually gone through the public process properly, where it's gone before the commission, there's been a workshop, it had great support, and it really seems like a less controversial issue than the grading ordinance. I would hope that the supervisors can provide Planning Department with guidance and direct staff to give the time necessary to draft a Class K housing ordinance. Thank you.
All right, with no other public comment, we'll bring it back to the board. All right, county matters. 1.1, accept nominations and elected chair and vice chair for the calendar year 2019. No fiscal impact.
I would concur with the last comment, but I believe that District 4 has been without representation chosen by their constituents for quite a while since Bill Burton. After the appointment of Terry, they overwhelmingly had opportunity to select from among four men. They selected Supervisor-elect Jeremy Brown, and I think that the timing of this... There is no reason to select a chairperson or even the committees prior to him being on the board. I think it's an insult to District 4, and I think it's not the way to unite the county going forward with all five districts being represented equally. I also think that there again has the appearance of manipulation by the Board of Supervisors to eliminate a supervisor's role in not having his input. I don't know if he's been contacted at all for the committees. I don't even know if he knows what committees he would like to be on. I don't know if Supervisor Mines has had the opportunity to talk to him about the alternative positions he sits on and what that requires. I have no idea. I hope that Terry has spoken to him and let him know of the time commitments involved with these committees, but I think it would be wrong to nominate and choose a chair and a vice chair and to appoint committee. We have two weeks. He'll be sitting on the board. There's no reason that I'm aware of that we can't wait two weeks.
Supervisor Chadwick, I will point out before the discussion that we are not appointing committees today. Supervisor Dunn?
I'd like to make a motion to table this item 1.1 regarding nominations for chair and vice chair until January 15th, probably because neither of you want to know how I feel about this process right now. So I'd be looking for a second.
I'll second.
I'd like to make an alternate motion, a subsequent motion. I'd like to elect Judy Morris chair, nominate Judy Morris chair, and I'd like to do this that alone.
Point of order. Is there public comment on this item?
Counselor?
There will be once you have the motion open for discussion. I don't have a second on either.
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. No, I correct that. District 3, second and first one. So you don't have a second on your subsequent motion?
I'll second for discussion.
Okay. All right. With that, we'll go into discussion and we'll go into public comment, which should be first.
Justin Hawkins, hey, Ford. Good morning. Surprised we get to admit comment after the motions. That's not usually how it works, I recall. This is different, though, I suppose. I think it only makes sense in a representative form of government that people get to choose who their supervisor is, and then that supervisor, along with the rest of the board, would choose who the chairperson is. Makes sense. I don't think there's any need to rush it, frankly. Trinity County government rolls really slow, so we're probably okay if we wait two weeks. But again, though, I think if we haven't already seen this county, not necessarily grading, it might be a lack of leadership, so we should probably wait until the board is fully seated. Thank you.
Hi, my name... Good morning. Happy New Year. My name is Susan Corey. I was down in Junction City this for New Year's, and it was a hot topic around the campfire. So I'm up this morning, thought I'd maybe speak on it, and I think most of those people agree that it should wait, at least until their representative, elected official is on the board. So I just kind of would like to state that and hope that you guys can hold off on this until you have a full board of elected officials, and then you can nominate who's going to be in charge. Okay, thank you much.
Kate Grace from Liston. I'd like to agree with what was said before. The people have a right to elected representatives, and they have... The chairperson runs this board, and they're a very important part of the Board of Supervisors. They set the tone, they run the meetings, they allow people to speak. They have a lot more choice and flexibility about what happens in the meeting and what it comes out from the public, and that's an important position. And to do it, to choose it now when Junction City Downriver's duly-elected representative isn't here, and I... What would be the purpose of that? What would be the reason that it needs to be done now? Logically, you should wait. So since you're doing it now, you must have a reason. Is it one that can't wait? And this has happened before in other issues. The person coming in who's elected needs to be here to have a say, and there's no rush in this. Thank you.
Any other public comment?
Tom Fox from Weederville. Equal representation under the law is guaranteed to the American people. This county seems to see that it shouldn't happen that way. Terry Mines was never elected. He's never been put on the Board of Council by anyone other than one of the people who soon will be indicted by President Trump. 69,000 indictments are coming out soon. Trinity, well, California has almost 12,000 of those 69,000 in our state because we're corrupt. And it's not the people that are corrupt, it are the process and the powers that be who came to power for a personal reason and not to help the people, but to help themselves. The people can see it. The people are fed up with it. You don't need to make this appointment until the proper elected supervisor is seated. Thank you.
Good morning, Chair. Lisa Wright, Liston. I would support Supervisor Finley's motion that this be tabled until the new board is completely seated. Second, I don't like to think it's appropriate for Ms. Morris to second a motion nominating herself.
For discussion.
Excuse me?
It's for discussion.
I don't think it's really appropriate, so I would be in full support of Mr. Finley's motion, and I urge the board to support it as well. Thank you.
Anybody else? All right.
My name is Ellen Perry from Coffee Creek. I am new here. I recently moved here, and I heard about what was going on, and I just think that it is extremely appropriate to wait until the people have... It seems to me that they've made a decision, and that person who they've elected should be on this board, and their vote matters, and their opinion matters, and I think that we should wait the two weeks until he's on board.
All right, anybody else? With that, we'll close and come back. Counselor, do we have to do a redo of the motion since we got that out of...
You currently have the motion. You have to deal with the first one that was Mr. Finley's motion to nominate.
We would do the subsequent first.
Yes. You have the two motions currently pending before. So you have the subsequent if you want. If that was an amended motion, it sounded like it was a subsequent motion.
So, but my question is, is since we did that out of order, do we have to redo it or those motions stand?
It's cleaner if you're do it, redo it.
Yes, John?
I'd like to make a motion to table item 1.1, accepting nominations for chair and vice chair until our next meeting in January 15th. Again, probably don't want to hear what I want to say about it in discussion.
I'll second it.
Is this where I make a subsequent, subsequent motion again?
You can make a subsequent motion again, yes.
Okay, yes. I'll make a subsequent motion to elect Judy Morris or nominate Judy Morris chair.
Terry, would you, since it's in rotation, would you consider chair and vice chair, Supervisor Chadwick?
Yeah, I actually, well, I thought it was going to go to discussion, but yeah, I thought that you'd do it one at a time, but if you do it together, is, well, it's chair and vice chair is actually how it was done last time I was here.
Well, if you want the discussion on what your motion is, there needs to be a second.
Okay, yeah. So I'll redo it. I say, I'd like to nominate Chairman Judy Morris and then Vice Chair Bobby Chadwick for their seats.
I'll second for discussion. Supervisor Chadwick, are you not interested in the vice chair?
I just have one question. Have you spoken with and asked Supervisor-elect Jeremy Brown what he wants? You're the outgoing. This is a technicality that you're up here. As a matter of fact, the last time we were here, we all assumed it was your last time. So this is just a technicality. Have you spoken to Jeremy Brown? Do you know what he wants?
Jeremy Brown hasn't reached out to me over this matter.
That's not what I asked.
I...
You have no idea what Supervisor Brown-elect wants for his district.
It's really not important to me because I'm the supervisor till the seventh.
That's right. It's not important to you what the district wants.
No, it's not. I was following what's been pretty much the way this has been going on for a long time. There's people moving in line and work their way to the chair. That's why it was your turn for the vice chair. I actually have a lot of things I'd like to say, too, about the way things are going here, but I was kind of doing what has been normal without trying to break things. I think the county's actually been doing pretty good moving forward on a lot of topics. We did, as one person mentioned, lose out on a very serious grading situation on that county put some time into, but so be it. The county chose not to go that direction, but I was just going through with what was...
The answer is no. I was just... Yes or no? The answer is no. You haven't reached out to him. You don't know what he wants. Okay.
No, nor did he reach out to me.
Are you not interested in vice chair?
I'm standing with the motion that was made by Finley. I want to know what Jeremy Brown wants.
Chair, maybe we can...
So I'm confused. Do we have a second?
I have, yeah.
Okay. On the both. Okay?
Maybe we can... This is an amended question. This would be end of the agenda, and then we can finish the agenda.
You really should deal with it down there.
Any further discussion?
No.
Sure. Okay, John?
I think tabling it is the best idea. I disagree with what some of the public said regarding Terry not being de-elected and all that kind of good stuff, but that's the normal rhetoric. I also really hate to do this to Supervisor-elect because it puts a lot of pressure on him, on him coming in. I also, at this point, I have no confidence in Supervisor Morse necessarily taking the chair, and especially what's been going on for the past two years regarding Supervisor Groves and Morse and the way they've been handling the situation in the county. So that's one of the reasons. I have no confidence in the upcoming leadership.
Okay. Any other discussion? All right, I'll call for the vote.
On which motion?
Subsequent first.
To Judge Morris?
Can I put another subsequent on?
We have a vote heading. You know, Terry, given that, we see what's going on, you might want to consider withdrawing your motion. Given...
We're in the middle of a vote. Could we have some guidance from...
He can withdraw the motion, but it is currently being called for vote, so people should...
Can you read the motion back? Because I'm not clear what his... If it was a chair and vice chair involved.
My understanding of the motion is their nomination for Supervisor Morris as chair and your incoming for vice... Oh, I'm sorry, for, to his vice chair.
Well, I guess I'll withdraw my subsequent motion because it's not going to continue as normally. I guess people want somebody else's view on this, and it'll be a different board.
All right, can we... We're in the middle of a vote. Can we withdraw the motion here?
She just said it could.
Okay. Okay.
We also have a current running motion heading.
Emotion, Bobby.
Action taken on it.
So, the motion has been withdrawn on the subsequent. I will now call for a vote on the original motion.
Tabling to January 15th, 2019.
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Mines?
No.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes, it doesn't really matter, but we'll table it.
I'd say yes.
Yes. Supervisor Groves?
Yes. All right, let's move on. Presentations, please turn over to the vice chair.
We don't have the official...
So Supervisor Groves, I want to thank you for your leadership as chair. It's been wonderful working with you. Even you came in right after your accident and didn't really stop and put incredible time in with a lot of extra work this last year. So on behalf of the board, I want to thank you for all your work and leadership in this past year, 2018.
So pretend this is your only time.
We'll thank you with it next year.
Well, I think you did this week. I want to thank the board. It's been a pleasure being the chair. And I think we've moved the county forward, slow as it may be, and looking forward to working with everybody next year. All right, consent item, calendar. These items include routine, non-controversial matters that will be acted upon by the board. One, roll call motion. A member of the board, staffer, public may request the item to be pulled and considered separate. Ms. Chadwick?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Morris?
Yep.
Mr. Mines? Nate? Mr. Finley?
No, sir.
I will pull 3.4. Staff? Public.
I'd like to pull 3.6.
All right, anybody else from the public?
All right, I accept a motion.
So...
Second.
Roll call, please.
Supervisor Finley?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Aye.
Supervisor Mines?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Aye.
All right, 3.4, I am going to recuse because this is an alcohol item.
Okay, so, item 3.4, final objections to the issuance of a daily alcoholic beverage license to the North Trinity Lake Improvement Association to serve alcoholic beverages at their dinner to be held at 20 Scott Road, Trinity Center, California on January 19th, 2019. No fiscal impact. Members of the public, any comments?
I've brought this up before, but we know that Keith has to be pulled off, has to recuse himself. So either in the wording, we should put in that thing on alcohol that he's going to... Is known that he's recusing himself. That way you don't have to leave the room. Or don't put it on the consent agenda.
Anybody else from the public? Yes.
I would assume that's up to Supervisor Groves to recuse himself or not.
Correct. Right. Then he does have to leave the room.
He needs to make that decision.
All right. So moved.
All right, do I have a second?
Yes, ma'am, second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
In the post? All right, so you're done. It passes. Oh, there it is. 3.6.
All right, 3.6, adopt a resolution that distributes excess proceeds from the 2016-17 tax, defaulted property tax auction revenue in the amount of $103,758.49 to the general fund not budgeted in the 1819 budget. Yes, Kate?
So, just to kind of prefer, preference this. When, when somebody doesn't pay what the government says they owe them for their property, um, we call that a tax. The tax is based on what the government says the property is valued at. So for example, if you have a property that the government says is $250,000, and they're taking a percentage of that every year because that's what they say your property is worth. If you don't pay the government that amount, then they foreclose on your property. They forcibly remove you from it. They take your property, they sell it, and then you go through, you have to go through the process of not only proving it was yours, even though they took it from you. You have to wait a year to get that money back. On top of that, what's equally egregious that I don't think people pay attention to is that it's an actual take on your property. And I mean take as an eminent domain. If the government takes your property, they're required by law and by statute and by court case to reimburse you for the amount that your property is worth. If you take their property, which the government says is valued at $250,000, and you've been taking money from them according to that value, then you turn around and sell their property for, let's say, $50,000, $75,000. And then you take out what you say they owe you and all your costs. And then they have to file a claim and prove it's theirs to get that portion of their money back. What happens to the other hundred, or $200,000? Their property was worth that much. The government states that. When you took their property, that is literally a take on their property. And, and I wish someone could, they don't, you took their property, they don't have enough money to do it. I wish someone would take this county to court, or any county that does this, for eminent domain. Because that's what you've done. You've taken their property and you've not reimbursed them accordingly. And, and this is part of what you have, that you, um, direction for staff, which is direction for your elected official. That if you're gonna take someone's property and you say it's worth a certain amount, if you only get $50,000 for it, then you completely misvalued the property that you were making them pay on. So either you reimburse them for the amount that you said it was worth, and you take out your part, or you at least go back and reimburse them for the taxes you took claiming that it was worth $250,000. If you sold it for $50,000, that's apparently all it was worth. So that's what I'm saying to you. Either reimburse them for the full amount minus what you say they owe you, which would be eminent domain because it's a take on their property, or at least reimburse them because you're obviously wrong about what the property was valued at.
Does anybody want our tax collector to respond to that? Okay, next.
I'd like to make mention that as each of you, by the California Constitution, have taken an oath to support and defend the United States Constitution. The laws of the United States are still active here in Trinity County and viable. And there are 50 sections of the United States Code, which are the rules, the laws, that you are supposed to be supporting and defending. Title 31 of the United States Codes and Section 3142 says that if the counties, municipalities, state of California do not pay property tax, it is unconstitutional for you to charge a property tax. Then it becomes fraud when you charge a property tax that people can't afford to pay, don't pay, and you take and sell their house and keep them on. It's wrong. It's gonna be in the courts very, very, very soon, and you need to reconsider this process that you're using. Thank you.
So be more.
Terry, do you have something to say?
I can provide clarification if you would like.
All right.
If not, please.
I'm sorry, did you want, on the first or the second?
I believe if you can wrap them together. Can you wrap them together?
Um, I can provide more detail on what this actually is.
Please.
So, um, a property, in order for a property to go to sale, the sale that we have is called a defaulted property tax auction. And we are not in the real estate business, so I'm not there to sell a property for what it's worth. My responsibility as a treasurer tax collector is to make that property whole and to recoup the cost of the, the defaulted taxes that are there. And I'd like to remind everybody that these, before a property can reach the point of being sold, um, it has to be defaulted for over five years. So we've done quite a bit of due diligence. So the owners of the property do have that opportunity to make sure that they, if they wanted to get the full value of their property, they could sell it on their own. But it is my responsibility to make sure the taxes are kept whole. So.
Do you have any more questions for?
Not at this time. Uh, maybe I can meet with you privately. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
I, I personally know of a man who didn't pay his property tax for one year. Every year after that, he paid his property tax. But because he didn't pay that one year, six years later, they took his property. Because he didn't pay that year's property taxes for six years. So I've seen you do it. You have done it, and you do it all the time. So he was always thinking that he was paying one year in the rear, and he wasn't.
The day the property is, um, not paid, that's when the property becomes delinquent. And that's the default date, is the date, the original date. So you can't, they can choose what year you want to pay. Code does not allow for that. So it's the default date when it originally is not paid.
Yeah, but he just paid it.
Okay, any other public comments? All right, back to the Board.
Are you looking for a motion?
I am.
Okay, I'd like to make a motion to Uber 3.6 as presented from the treasurer tax collector.
I second. We have discussion. Bobby, you're looking like you want to say something.
I, I'm gonna have to meet with Terry.
Okay.
It's gonna take nothing but a minute.
I will say these are interesting arguments that are way above our paper.
I did want to say something, though. Um, I didn't like what John mentioned. I think that's horrible, what happened to that person. I think if a person came in and actually paid and, um, even if that's went out in default, I would be totally confused. If I say, this 2017, and I came in and I had money, and it was, came with 2018, and I tried to pay 2017 to get caught back, I would just, personally, I would think that would give you that year if it didn't. I, I mean, just as a normal person, I would have felt that, just like that person probably did, that he felt he was paying backwards. If it wasn't clearly explained to me that it wasn't doing that, that would have been probably a little confusing. So, I mean, just, just honesty, that could see that confusion is totally happening. It's a realistic situation. And I think that that would be tough. That was, you know.
Because we're, we're off our, our topic here, so you don't need to answer to that. Okay, any other questions, comments? All right, roll call.
Supervisor Myers?
Yes.
Supervisor Penlin?
Yes.
Supervisor Chadwick?
Yes.
Supervisor Morris?
Yes.
Supervisor Groves?
Yes. All right, uh, reports and announcements, um, department heads. Do you have any department head?
Supervisor Groves has requested I bring some information back about pulling a fire, um, for some leaves. And staff was, uh, with break, I wasn't able to collect the whole information. So I'll be bringing it back in next meeting.
Do you have anything else?
No.
Any other department heads? All right. Members of the Board, or, excuse me, the CAO. I think I missed you last time, too.
Oh, well. Nothing, uh, nothing new this year.
Supervisor Myers?
Uh, nothing to report.
Supervisor Penlin?
No out-of-county travel. I, I hope. I better look. Um, I have nothing to report out other than I'm ready to go get some product, some, uh, asphalt, and go down and start filling holes along the Kent and Palm, the road to Kent and Palm and Senior, before we start getting, uh, too many bumpers falling off cars and having people start to sue us for their car repairs or dying.
I'm sure the people of Kent and Palm would be happy with you doing that.
Yeah, I'm sure they will because I'll be, I'll end up paying for it.
All right. Supervisor Chadwick?
Yes, I, I was invited and spent, uh, the New Year Mown Day. Uh, the Hayfork Fairgrounds was transformed and, to a magical place. Um, it was started at 10:00 AM on Saturday, December 22nd, and went till midnight. They had beautiful dancers and, um, music, uh, food all day long, and some customs that were shared. And I would like to share one of the customs that I felt is very, um, beautiful. They, uh, let go of the past year, all the negative, all the bad. They release it into the atmosphere with balloons. And they have a blessing for the incoming year, um, for peace and prosperity and wealth. And I just thought, uh, that was a real good visual, and I appreciated them sharing their whole cultural day with, with me. But, uh, it was, it was quite an event. This is an annual. They're planning on doing it again, and the whole community, um, is invited. So I, I appreciate this moment to be able to speak out.
Show us your shield.
All right, Supervisor Morris. Thank you, Bobby.
Yep.
Okay. No out-of-county travel from me. All right, ad hoc committees, uh, state cannabis legislation.
Nothing since last time.
John?
None.
Okay. Permanent, uh, commercial cannabis ordinance?
Same as reported last time.
Okay. Jail facility?
For two, right there. They're still moving forward on everything. Still moving forward schedule.
Okay, wilderness oversight?
Kind of cost about, um, $1,154 or $695, depending on where the meeting's going to happen, and each one where that money's gonna come from.
Have you, uh, referred that to the CAO?
I've got the information from the CAO. So I assume this Board needs to figure out where the budget committee, oh, no, we don't have a budget committee anymore, um, where that's really gonna come from.
Well, John, you're gonna have to pick one or the other. You either want the Board to make your decision, or you want the CAO to make it.
I'll be, I'll be discussing, um, the place probably with, uh, John at Congressman's office.
Just one.
They, they, yeah, they lean either way. So we'll see.
You're gonna have to clarify that for me with that.
Um, Kent and Palm Senior will probably not be in favor necessarily of, of the wilderness bill, and Kent and Palm has a tendency more, to be more in favor of it.
So-
Depends on what you, who you want to hear from, and who he wants to hear from in theory.
I'm not terribly concerned. The Congressman has already put the bill forward and has done his work in the county. I am concerned with-
Then why are we having to do work for Congressman in our county on his bill?
Because the Congressman refused, which would be too, a little too harsh, but has not asked, uh, opinion of the Board or the people of the county. And I'm trying to interject myself into that as county representative.
And possibly we should have no outlook or no favor or disfavor on his bill and stick to our own county business.
Well, then you should have voted that way when we voted. You voted to have taken opinion. If you're not, if you want to change that, then-
No, the Congressman can go find the opinion for us. It's not our job to do the Congressman's job.
It's our job to protect the people of the county from-
The federal government?
From the federal government, yeah.
And as I've had discussions I've had with everyone else, they just, they just, we're way off topic here, but I enjoy it. Um, I, they have no, they will take the line if they want it, or they won't, if they don't. Doesn't matter what we have to say, probably.
And why are they concerned about what we say?
I have no idea because they want to be reelected.
So John, are you asking to disband this?
I asked, um, four meetings ago, three meetings ago, to disband the wilderness.
I don't know that either.
I'd like to disband all the ad hocs if we're on them right now.
The, um, well, we're not-
More than happy to do, to have you do that.
All right. Is the, I will ask the Board if the Board has any interest in, um, I'll throw my, do you protect in Trinity County from becoming a, a massive park with no use?
And no fire protection.
And no fire protection. Or are we just, do we want to make a stand to do that? Or do we just want to let the federal government do what they choose to do?
And we can still make a stand, Keith, without having, uh, doing the work for Congressman. We actually kind of did make a stand that we, that the three of us would not be in favor of this bill.
Right.
And would not support it, but we can also take the approach of having, uh, not supporting it, not not supporting it, just having a neutral stand. And each of us on our own can decide, uh, make a very, very vocal on whether we support it or not.
Supervisor Morris?
Well, I think in that discussion, uh, there was a motion that failed to take a neutral stand, which you didn't take, John. Secondly, I think we also-
It was, uh, it was to table it, wasn't it?
Let it go.
It was to neutral, for a neutral stand.
It was to be neutral.
Supervisor Myers, I advocated to take the neutral stand at the moment. And we also, the Board also discussed to have a full presentation of the bill so we could really fully understand what was, uh, involved. And, um, so that's still part of the direction the Board gave.
You mean to tell me we, Supervisor Groves, his Chair brought forward a full presentation of the bill without informing, um, Congressman's office that he was doing that, so Congressman could be here?
I'd love to ask a question or-
No, it would, uh, when you brought it up, I actually mentioned you want Briskel to be here.
Yes, when we discussed the direction, we said, yes, we want John to be here. He was here.
John, go ahead. Make your point.
You, uh, you did say that you didn't want to let Briskel know that you were bringing it forward.
I said that I had no interest. They, they had made their case to the people of Trinity.
But they hadn't made it to the Board of Supervisors.
That's, that's their issue. They have not, they have not asked this Board if it's, if we care that Trinity County would represent 1.5% of the wilderness in the United States. With this bill-
Then why would we support it and why are we pursuing this?
Because I feel-
When we haven't even offered health and safety services to our constituents. But this is more important- But this is more important, along with cannabis being way more important.
Actually, it is more important that the fact that millions of dollars, potential revenue is taken out of our hands by the federal government with no reparations.
Absolutely, a hundred percent, and, and they have not stepped forward with rack one or rack two, and they will not step forward with this.
So, if you just wanna lay over and die, fine. I swore to myself when I took this office that I would never just lay over and die without a fight to be run over and kicked again and again and again by the federal government. I could be tilting at windows, and that's fine. But it's justly unfair of what they're doing, and I'm just trying to.
I agree with you a hundred percent.
That you don't agree in the role of the county to stand up for itself. And this is how we've gotten this position, is we've just been the nice little guys that get kicked in the teeth time and time and time again. It's time to stand up and say, at least kick me in the knee, I'm not gonna lay down. But with that, I, I don't know if anybody else in the board has this feeling to pursue the wilderness.
May I make a suggestion, chairs? Um, allow the individual supervisors within their own districts to, um, that, my recollection at the conclusion of that vote was that we were going to do it in order to get the input from the people. We did take a stand that day, and Judy is correct, it was, uh, not a neutral. And we were going to have time to, to get feedback, and, and that was what I remember and recall. But we, we were gonna do it as a united, um, board, but if, if there are supervisors that feel they already have their pulse, then that's fine. And if there's supervisors that need to, um, find out what their constituents' desires are, then it's, uh, we can do it individually.
This is the cost of taking the full board to the, the capital locations to have constituents talk to us.
Correct, and I, I like the idea of the full board, I really do. But if, if there's a, a problem, then.
No, I don't have a problem at all, Supervisor Groves has a deadline coming up, I believe.
Yes, I had planned to meet with, uh, the Congressman on the week of February twenty-second, twenty-fourth, and there. And I would like to have some sort of move forward if, if there's a place we can negotiate from, or there's no place we can negotiate from. And, and if the bill is so out of whack with what the county wants, then we just tell them that, and that's a done deal. If there's things that we can do to improve the bill from a Trinity County standpoint, then we can offer it to him, and then he can choose if he wants to cooperate with Trinity County or not.
Can I make a suggestion regarding your meeting to make a decision regarding the future of Trinity County? Possibly, it should be a board meeting with all four, five of us here?
You can't even get.
Instead of you meeting with him privately, bringing your concerns forward? I don't like the bill, I'm sorry. But you understand why I'm coming here for?
You're doing everything possible to let this bill move forward.
With, with or without our comment, or as, as a full board representing Trinity County?
I'm trying to get, I've asked you for two months to get, so we can have a full board decision.
Right, only meeting with a certain area of the public, not having a full public meeting with the Congressman, with you only stepping forward to meet with the Congressman on your own. I find that very disappointing and not necessarily open and transparent. And not including the entire board in this meeting, you wanna set this up before and, and either rally your troops or, in one way or another, with a certain air. If you want, if you want people to be against it, let's go to Ketten Palm. If you want people to be for it, we can go to Hyam Palm. I'm really disappointed in, in the way you're handling this as chair.
Well, John, I guess you miss the fact that Congressman has been here.
Meeting with each one of us in pairs or individually.
And he's met with the public, and it's.
In Leaverville, and that's it.
And we are the governing body.
And he has met, not met with the board in a public situation. But you are, you are taking it upon yourself to meet with him privately.
To represent the county, John.
Or the Board of Supervisors, did anyone else know about that?
Well, you knew about it because I've requested it.
Right, and you gave me a reason for requesting it, I'm just very disappointed.
Well, I'm disappointed that you don't understand how government works.
Yeah, absolutely, and I certainly don't understand how you and Judy have been running this government with hats and colors.
We can give you a ton of work, John.
Well, united we stand, divided we fall, looks like we're falling.
Then you better unite us, or the next chair better unite us.
Well.
And give us all the information all the time and do it publicly.
You sit on this ad hoc, John, for wilderness. We've been asking for you to set up these public meetings. The board has, yes, we've discussed it here. So, what's, what's, and what is the cost? I mean, we set up two public meetings aside, and in Hayfork, wherever you guys decide, as an ad hoc, bring it to the board. It's not that difficult. And we get a presentation, we hear public comment, board can discuss the item, and be a little bit better informed.
Your point is taken.
Well, John.
Which place do you wanna go, Ketten Palm or the board?
No, actually, at this time, John, your performance in ad hocks has been.
Dismal.
Dismal, and so, since you choose, you don't wanna be on ad hocks, we will disband this. And every supervisor will be on their own to give testimony or talk to whoever they want. So, Tina, please remove this from the agenda in the future.
Actually, Ted, you need a vote to do that, and actually, this isn't agendaized as far as dissolving the ad hoc committee?
No, that will come up.
This is just an update announcement, please ignore action on it?
Um, in the past, we've, the, the chair has, is the one that sets up ad hoc or, or a member.
Has it been agendaized in the past?
No, but it will be in the future.
For our committee selection.
So, are you saying I can't disband it or not?
Correct.
If it's your past, if, if it's your past practice that you have solely been the one, um, disbanding or creating committees, then of course I'll defer to your priorities and stuff.
Well, I'll put it this way, then I will step off, and John, you'll get to actually run something and see if you can get it done. With that, we will move to closed session, government code, section fifty-four nine five four five, conference of legal counsel and anticipated litigation, and cases one. Any other comment on closed session?
Litigation is pending, but being a litigator myself, um, it is perhaps the more uncomfortable part of our legal system, just like, you know, some of the lawmaking. Doesn't mean we shouldn't delve in and engage in it, sometimes it's necessary. Two people can see the same thing and disagree, and we have a system to, uh, achieve an answer to that. Maybe it's not the best system, it's one we have, works pretty well. Like a lawyer, I guess, maybe others, but I encourage the board to, uh, weigh in with both, be where necessary, where litigation occurs, and, uh, don't shy away. It's just, it's part of government, it's part of America, it's certainly part of California, but, good luck.
I did wanna say, Kate Grace from Lewis, and I did wanna say something that I, I think I should know. When we have pending litigation, this is litigation where, for some reason, someone may take legal action against the county, which is us. And so many times, there's other boards, I mean, I, I've seen where there's five pending litigations, and they just go away, well, what was the issue? Why were we almost sued? I mean, I've seen where, um, contractors have thrown in letters that, well, if you do this, we're gonna sue. Well, there was no pending litigation there. So, it doesn't give us, um, a level of what the litigation is. And a lot of times, it's a threat to get the board to move in a certain direction, which isn't fair to the public. And that is our business to know. I realize that what you talk about with your, uh, counsel is private and closed session, but I don't see that why it's being, what the issue is, should be in closed session, because it most certainly affects us. Unless they're suing a board member, unless they're suing an employee, they're suing us. And, um, we, we have a right to have more information, even if it doesn't go anywhere. Maybe we need to know what the underlying issue was, they can be issues that are corrected that, that should've been brought to us, even though they were corrected. I don't know if that makes sense, there, there's something wrong, and it would behoove you guys to let us know. I don't see why that would be secret and closed session and private, just some thought for the future, thanks.
Anybody else? All right, we'll adjourn for, or we'll take a ten minute break.
That's all you have to do is.
So, we on now?
Yes.
So, reporting on a closed session, uh, we're giving the details of anticipated litigation. With that, we're adjourned at ten forty-nine.